Okay, we'll call the committee to order and stand for the pledge. All right, Christina, would you do the roll call, please?
Fish, Johnson, Cole, Lawrence, Marceau, Steen, Mayor Buck.
Here. Uh, we've got the agenda, any additions or corrections? Okay. Anything else? All right, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda. Motion second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. We have the minutes from the March 13 and March 17 meetings. Any additions or corrections there? Motion a second to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. Uh, claims on pages fourteen through sixteen. Any comments or questions, otherwise we'll look for a motion on that. Motion a second to approve the claims. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. We don't have any consent calendar this, uh, this meeting. Visitors in time batted. This is an opportunity for anybody that would like to, uh, address the council on any particular issue, whether it's on the agenda or not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, you might want to wait later, but you can do it now, too. Uh, so if anybody would like to address the council on any particular issue, you're welcome to. Seeing none, we'll move on. Uh, public hearings, Patrick.
Hey, we, we have four, so we'll start with number one, ordinance seven twenty-eight. This is the first of three that deals with wireless telecommunications. Seven twenty-eight is, deals with the wireless telecom facility regulations themselves. The ordinance is broken down into various sections. Overall, for the whole discussion, planning and zoning first began this discussion on November seventh. So after having seven meetings, I think they skipped the one January second or something just 'cause so close to the new year, but they've held seven meetings with one public hearing, so eight total meetings since November seventh. So sections one, two, and three of ordinance seven twenty-eight basically specify that there are certain things about cell towers. One of the things are, if they can prove that no, a significant gap in coverage and then, and no feasible alternative site exists, then that is what they need to prove federally that that's the location regardless of what our regulations say. So obviously, I have no idea what I would be looking at to prove significant gap in coverage, or that's the only site. So in the event we need to hire someone to help us do that, this basically specifies that we hire somebody and they pay for it, and they give us a report and we'll talk about it and we'll figure it out. So that's what one, two, and three does. Four is kind of the big meat of the section, of the change. Right now, a cell tower is required to be a new cell tower, three hundred feet from a residentially zoned or used property. Used is tough, a land use changes all the time, zoning does, but it's generally more consistent. So what it proposes to replace that language with is one point one times the height of the tower from a residentially zoned lot. So you would measure from the base of the tower to the property line of the residential lot. And the reason why we went through all these things trying to figure out what number is best and how to measure them is that it's kind of a balancing act of, of course, you want to protect residents not only from just, just sight and proximity, but we have to allow them to provide sufficient coverage, and there's the federal interest. So you try to come up with a balancing act, and otherwise, the telecommunications act basically says we can't prohibit or effectively prohibit. If you withdraw three hundred feet, um, from a residential property all over Brandon, would that be an effective prohibition? Arguably yes, arguably no. Obviously, we want to provide the service and protect people. So the number of planning and zoning came up with was one point one times the height of the tower. And finally, section five, if they submit documentation to F, the FCC, we would like to just have it in our files. Whether we would understand it or not, but we would have it, and if we need to use it and digest it, we certainly could. That is ordinance seven twenty-eight.
Okay, this is all recommended, do pass.
Correct, planning and zoning recommended to do pass.
Thank, planning and zoning for us, they put in a lot, a lot of time, and, uh, they look at these things very thoroughly and appreciate their efforts.
I would make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Motion second to approve the first reading of ordinance seven twenty-eight.
Can I have a quick, just a quick question? So what, the reason this is all coming up and why we're going through this now is it, is it mainly because we have a, uh, discussion of one coming to town potentially, that's why this is all coming up now?
Correct. Over the past year, I've probably had conversations with three different companies. Usually they are tower builders rather than carriers themselves. They build the tower and they lease the space off the tower. So we've had conversation with some, most of them seem to not go anywhere. One, the most recent one has, they have submitted a conditional use permit application for the lot at one oh eight West Park Street. So that is kind of told, they submitted it, we have a, the FCC has a shot clock, you have to meet certain deadlines. It's currently told because as a carrier, they don't know if they can, they're not actually providing the service, so then can they prove a gap in their coverage if they're not providing the service? But right now, they would not be able to meet the three hundred feet from the residentially zoned or used property, namely the schools of the south. So what, our regulations aren't designed to accommodate any particular applicant. We just tried to find a reasonable balance. If they can meet it, great, if they can't, then it is what it is. We're just trying to find a reasonable ground. So the next step in their process is, as far as review of their actual application, they are waiting for this potential change. Whether it actually makes their project go forward or not, I don't know. It depends, I think the tower based on where the school is would be roughly ninety feet. But what we do have scheduled is they have requested to rezone that lot. It's the little lot with our detention pond north of Robert Bennett. From NRC to general business, that public hearing, planning and zoning is April seventeenth, and the public hearing with you all is the twenty-first. So that's just changing the zone, it's not permitting the tower, but that kind of gets into seven twenty-nine a little bit.
Any further discussion on seven twenty-eight? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. That motion carries. First reading of seven twenty-nine.
So seven twenty-nine, it addresses the general business district. So right now, wireless telecommunications tower is already a conditional use. So the application we just talked about is proposing a rezone from NRC to general business to potentially accommodate that conditional use permit application, because right now, NRC, so. But basically, what we're trying to clean up there is the lot and yard regulations table. So we'll keep kind of the standard setbacks for telecom tower, obviously a forty-five foot height probably wouldn't do much for them. So it's just adding the C number six, basically we'll look at the one point one times height thing to be your height requirement. So that's kind of what that does, it's already a conditional use. So it just messes with the table a little bit, but.
Okay, I'll look for a motion on seven twenty-nine. Motion second to approve, seven twenty-nine, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. First reading of ordinance seven thirty.
So seven thirty proposes some changes to the institutional district. The first is it adds wireless telecommunications tower as a conditional use in that district, where it already existed for GB, that is adding a new use. Section two establishes setback requirements, kind of the same for general business. We kind of took what is the average setback for that district, and then the height, of course, depends on the height of the tower. One thing it does add different from general business is we have heard very strongly that residents are very concerned about protecting their smaller neighborhood parks. And we agree, planning and zoning agreed, so what they added into the code for this, in this amendment, would be if you do put up a cell tower, it can't be in a small neighborhood park, less than five acres in area. So that would eliminate all of our parks except for McCarty, Aspen, and Pioneer. You know, assuming it can meet the one point one times requirement. Pioneer, you know, has a lot of floodplain areas, we probably shouldn't build a tower in floodplain, or can't. So whether that's effectively eliminated or not, who knows? But that's kind of what it does, planning and zoning specifically wanted to include a protection for neighborhood parks.
Okay, any other discussion on seven thirty? Motion a second to approve, uh, ordinance seven thirty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. And the first reading of seven thirty-one.
So not about cell towers.
All right.
So right now, generally the way, you know, you get your, your lot, and then you have setbacks, so you have a building area, and then there's the setback area surrounding it. Right now, we have an exception to, you usually can't build things in the setback area. We have an exception that uncovered decks or paved patios not taller than twelve inches above grade can project into a side or a rear yard setback so long as they are five feet away from a property line. The issue there, not so much is your traditional residential house, but if you have a roam of townhouses. Generally, the side yards between them, they build right up to the side yards and they have their patio. They want to spread across the side yard, the rear yard's not so much of an issue, it's the side yard. They want to span the side yard to the side yard with their patio. So planning and zoning agree, that was kind of an oversight in the code, and are proposing to fix that by allowing an exception for those things to span entirety of, in the internal lots as well as in the external where the building would connect to the internal space.
Okay, any, any discussion? Motion to approve, in a second. Motion a second to approve, uh, first reading of ordinance seven thirty-one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries.
Patrick, I want to thank you, you've done tremendous work on all of this, so it's taken a lot of time, so thank you.
And thank the planning and zoning group. Um, okay, uh, C has been eliminated for this meeting, we'll possibly put it on the agenda for another meeting. And then we go to, um, some proclamations, and I've asked Christina to, uh, kind of read the proclamations, we have three of them.
I will touch on the highlights. Is anybody from the VFW here? Proclamation twenty-five, twenty twenty-five oh one is, um, about, um, the parade. So therefore, Harry Buck, Mayor of the City of Brandon, hereby call upon all my fellow citizens to take full advantage of the special occasion known as Loyalty Day, celebrated annually throughout the nation on the fourth day of May as an incentive for every true American to reaffirm his or her love of flag and country. And I urge that all citizens, schools, churches, organizations, business establishments, and homes within my official jurisdiction display proudly the flag of the United States of America and participate in the public patriotic Loyalty Day activities which are co-sponsored by the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States and others on Loyalty Day, May fourth, twenty twenty-five. Proclamation oh two is our Buddy Poppies. Um, so therefore, Harry Buck, Mayor of the City of Brandon, South Dakota, do hereby urge the citizens of this community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through the purchase of Buddy Poppies on this day set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honor and dedication. The last one is Building Safety Month. That is coming up in May. So this proclamation oh three is, um, whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely known, unknown protectors of the public safety and our code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas game on, the theme of Building Safety Month twenty twenty-five encourages us to all get involved and raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. Therefore, Harry Buck, Mayor of the City of Brandon, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty-five is Building Safety Month.
Okay, thank you. Now we have the Safe Drinking Water Award. So Raleigh, can you come and, and both of you? Anybody else from your group? All right. This is, uh, an award given out by the state of South Dakota, and it, um, I think it's an award that we've, we've gotten, it's about every year, it's going to come around.
How many years have we gotten that? Many?
Twenty-something, I know.
Wow, that's great, thank you.
All right, we'll move on, no old business. We'll go to standing committee reports. From the golf course, we have, uh, seasonal hire, correct?
Correct, Tripp Stevens and Isabella Steffel.
Oh, boy. All right. Motion second to approve the, uh, seasonal hires at the golf course. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. Uh, Parks and Rec, got the work report on page forty-four to forty-five. And we have a special event, Festival of Life. Brian, can you give us a brief description of this?
Sure, park committee reviewed the application for the Festival of Life, uh, to be held June sixth through the seventh of, of this year. Includes bands, some speakers, um, down in McCarty Park from six to nine on both weekends, park committee recommends approval.
All right, I'll look for a motion. Motion second to approve.
Can I ask real, real quick, uh, have we had this be here before? Is this, this new, new essay, I didn't think, this is the first time, Colby, you guys have been here, right?
Okay, motion a second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. And Miles for Mutt's.
Yep, uh, anytime fitness and B squad dog rescue will have a five K, for those of you that are interested in a five K, um, starting at Aspen Park at eight o'clock. This is their Miles for Mutt fundraiser, it's been six years, has it been that long? This will be the sixth time, the map for the five K is, is on page fifty-two. Park committee recommends approval.
All right, I'll look for a motion. Motion a second to approve the, uh, Miles for Mutt's on May third. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries.
Say, Buck, you said you got a quarter mile in the last month of walking or something. This, this would be much more than that, I challenge you.
One month at a time.
We have golf carts.
Yes, exactly right. All right. I'll be right there with you. This isn't the one where I got to judge the dog contest, this is a couple years ago. All right, all right. Uh, McCarty Park Irrigation Project.
We're having issues with, uh, McCarty Well. There's a well in McCarty Park that we use to irrigate the soccer fields. The, we think there's a fluctuation in the river which is affecting the aquifer. We've, uh, brought Tine Well in, they will video it and they will clean the screen to see if we get any more production out of it. But long-term, um, you know, the river, Split Rock Creek really fluctuates with drought conditions, which we've certainly had for the last couple of years. So we would like to at least explore potentially other sources of water. One would be the water main on the north side of Aspen, and the other one would be connected to the raw water line coming off of well seven, which is just south of the railroad tracks. We would like DGR to take a look at the feasibility of that, and then we would abandon that well if. The other alternative is to sink a new well, which may or may not produce any more water. So, four thousand dollars for DGR to, to take a look and review those, those two options.
All right, I'll look for a motion on that. Motion a second to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. Public safety, we got the police report on sixty-four through sixty-six. Inspection Department report on sixty-seven through sixty-eight. And we have a loyalty day parade. We need a motion on that, we do, don't we?
Correct, uh, the parade route's the same as it has been for a number of years, staging down at the high school, coming down Holly to Maine, and then south, and then dispersing once they get past the VFW.
Okay, let the golf course know if you need a cart.
Correct.
I'll look for a motion to approve the loyalty day parade. Motion a second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. Uh, we have an employee resignation.
Correct. Amanda Jezers has submitted a resignation.
From the police department, okay. Now, look for a motion on that. Motion a second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries.
We've already started advertising and we've got sixteen apps.
Really?
Right, in the first week.
Okay, good. And we have a quote to upgrade the camera system. Chief Steffel.
So this is a, uh, quote for the second year of the citywide camera project that we started last year. These, uh, quote is specific to traffic safety, um, for this year, and then we'll explore other infrastructure, buildings, city-owned property next year.
Okay, in the budget?
Yes, correct.
All right, I'll look for a motion. Motion second to approve the quote to upgrade the camera system. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. And we have an intern opportunity.
Yeah, if you remember, we, uh, working with the, uh, Rannelli High School, uh, some of their interns, we had, we have a kind of a split intern this spring, so we've had, uh, the young lady you had approved previously has been with us, and now on the eighth, I believe, the next intern, turns eighteen, she will start and go through the rest of the year with her internship.
All right, good. I'll look for a motion on that. Motion second to approve the intern program. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. And then we have a peders permit request, uh, for Sunday sales.
Correct, Barry Buck and Doing Businesses Let's Go Frank has submitted a request for Sunday sales and extended hours. These are the ones that P and Z just approved, uh, home occupation permit for Split Rock Boulevard, primarily focused on uses. So that's, that's the Sunday and extended hours.
And the staff is.
Yep.
Approved, okay. I'll look for a motion then on that. Motion a second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. And then we have another peders permit for Sunday sales and extended hours.
Correct, Carmen Giles, Doing Businesses, Family Treats, Homemade Ice Cream, has made the same request.
All right. I'll look for a motion.
We need to start getting these people to bring in some sample, samples.
I've had that discussion with the chief.
Well, you're doing the five K, I'll take care of this. Motion a second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries.
Hey, before we get off public safety, I just want to, uh, mention that a press release went out last week on Thursday that there's a date and time change for the outdoor warning siren testing. That is on Monday nights now at seven o'clock, used to be on the first Saturday, first Saturday of the month. Um, so they have that for those that are located outside of Sioux Falls city limits, which would include us. Sioux Falls, City of Sioux Falls will still continue to do theirs the first Friday of each month at eleven. But ours will be, so if you start hearing sirens at seven o'clock tonight, you know why.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, administration. City Hall Complex Site Review Committee. Um, I'll, uh, Colin and Dave, I think they're the same team, they're, they're already on the City Hall, uh, committee.
Correct.
And we'll set a meeting time.
Whatever works, um, we'll need to set a, uh, meeting time for the RFQ committee. We talked about Thursday, but I think on Thursday, Friday. Will Monday work right before the canvassing board meeting? Like at four, three thirty, four o'clock? Okay. Sure.
I won't be able to be here, I'm, we had a meeting in Sioux Falls, but I don't know, I need to be, um.
Yeah, we'll go over the RFQ first, and then I'll sit down with Colin and Dave and talk about the list of sites that we have to take a look at.
All right, okay. Uh, okay. We've got some surplus items.
Yes, um, it's that time of year, we do have, there's an auction coming up, um, out at Interstate Auction, so we're getting the surplus list ready to go. So the first resolution, resolution oh five twenty-five is the surplus property that will be sent to the auction. Um, it's listed by kind of department, and then the first list is those that we feel that are valued under twenty-five hundred, and there's just a couple that we feel that are valued over twenty-five hundred, but when they go to auction, we don't, just need to appraise it, so that's there for you. Resolution oh six twenty-five is surplus property that can be destroyed or, um, disposed of. Uh, we just don't feel there's any value for those. And then resolution oh seven twenty-five is surplus property that will be donated to the City of Spearfoot Fish. It is a scoreboard that they can utilize, um, so we'd like to donate it to them.
We will do these one at a time, so we'll start with oh five twenty-five. I'll look for a motion. Motion a second to approve, resolution oh five twenty-five, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. And then we have resolution oh six twenty-five. Motion a second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. And oh seven twenty-five. Is this a whole scoreboard?
Uh, controller.
The controller, yeah, okay. Motion a second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries.
And then the auction is May third at Interstate Auction. We do have to just do a couple advertisements that were having that, but, um, that's what it is.
All right, we'll move on, Brandon Development Foundation. Discussing a wetland bank.
Hello. I'm sorry, by the way, that's really awful. This will not, this will be more exciting than cell towers.
It will be?
Well, I hope so. Um, we are here because we have been working on a wetland bank. Something that was brought to us probably four months ago, I'm here representing, obviously, the Brandon Development Foundation. Do you have, where is she? Um, she's way smarter than me, so she's going to tell you all about this, and then I will answer any questions.
Yeah, so wetland bank, just to summarize, um, I don't have a particularly good description there, but basically what it is is to take something that's probably been degraded or, um, needs restoration and enhance it for the benefit of not just the environment, but water quality, and then, um, being able to put it into a de-restricted area for perpetuity, and then to, um, to be able to sell credits onto a market. There's a credit basis that the Corps of Engineers puts out there, and, um, when you restore a wetland area, you generate credits off of that. And then for the lower Big Sioux River watershed, there's, um, needs for that, so developers, transportation projects, county projects, municipalities, anybody that's going to be able to come in and need to impact a wetland for whatever reason are required to offset them, wetland impacts, and the preferred method is to purchase them from a wetland bank. So the, um, there's a property just east of town here that we have presented to the Corps of Engineers as an opportunity to re- of Engineers as an opportunity to restore and rehabilitate that area into a wetland bank. And, um, I guess from there, is there any other technical questions I could probably help you with?
How much do you, how much do they, they get for, uh, for that?
So, they gen, yep, it's generated by credits, um, they're, right now, the credit system within South Dakota, it varies depending on states, because wetland banking is a federal program that's across the United States and South Dakota, it's five and a half credits per acre and it's market driven.
Other discussion?
So, it's land that we, we can't use anyway, correct?
Currently, it is a stream, um, it's a tributary to Beaver Creek is what it currently is with wetland fringes, um, it's degraded, it's very cut bank, um, it's downcutting, it needs repair regardless of what happens with it, it's within the city of Brandon, so there would be, have to be something that would need to be done on this property regardless, four floodplain storage and there's additional development that is happening in and around, um, so there'll be inputs of additional water into the same tributary.
So, we'd have to do something with it anyway?
Correct.
Okay.
The foundation has found a mechanism of, of a way to improve that.
And this is land that's owned by the city currently? And how many acres?
Approximately sixty-two acres.
Sixty-two acres? Really? And the proposal is for the Development Foundation to purchase this? We don't know.
We're presenting the idea to you guys to see if this is something they're on board with, whether the Development Foundation is able to complete the work on this for the city and then work with the city on, after the Development Foundation has done their work on this property, it would go, be gifted back or be given still, be kept in the city of Brandon.
So, Tim, why does the Development Foundation want to do this?
Well, because we want, we were looking for something to do, basically. We, uh, historically for forty years have done industrial development, we bought land, we've put in streets, we've done all that kind of work, well, we only have one lot left. We're having a hard time finding something to buy to do that with and so we were just looking for a project to do within the city, I mean, the Development Foundation, uh, our only mission statement is to make Brandon better, so, uh, we were just looking for something to do and this was presented to us, so.
So, to make money, a developer would develop a, a plot of land?
Yes.
And they have wetland inside it, so to develop that, they would have to purchase credits or X number of acres?
Yep, that's correct, so they would have to go with and then go through the clean water for, for many action in order for them to be able to impact them wetlands within that and then the Corps of Engineers requires for them to offset them impacts by purchasing from a wetland bank within the same watershed.
So, it's a moneymaker in that way that we help a developer?
That's exactly what it is.
Continue their development?
Yes, it's a profit.
What, yeah, what is a credit?
A credit is this, it's a functional...
What's a credit worth?
Yes, a functional credit, so like banking is not like the bank that you guys are thinking of, it's where they create an area, so the sixty-two acre parcel, I can speak directly about that, um, you know, it has wetlands on it, there's a functional lift that happens by doing restoration and enhancement on that property and it's calculated, that lift is calculated by credits. So, um, when rest, restoring it, we go through this multiple models and, um, stream restoration processes that we run hydrographs and everything of how we're going to restore that area and that's how we generate the credit lift and then that's what we put on the market to sell. Now, if you are a developer on the flip side of it and you're going to impact that wetland, it, it's given a five and a half credit per acre for impacting that wetland.
And so, Tim, you guys had some ideas, um, of, of ways that you could enhance that for the city?
Yep.
Besides bringing it up to where it should be?
Right, so our board, when we started discussing this, also came up with the idea of, uh, going ahead and developing the park nature area on the east side, uh, we have money, so we were also, like I said, looking for a project to do. We wouldn't wait until we sold out the credits to do that, we would actually do that at the same time we're developing the wetland bank, if it's okay with you guys and me.
And what would this park look like? It's not a playground kind of park.
Um, well, some land that was donated, there was some things put in place that said that this has to look, this park has to look like, so as far as I know, it's like a walking path, nature area, whatever.
So, we just laid a sewer line going out to the new development?
Yep.
Utilities, other things will be, I mean, right of ways, things like that are not affected by wetland?
No, so I worked specifically with DGR on that project and did their wetland permitting for that project, so I'm very familiar with that and I've worked closely with multiple different engineer companies within the area, but that's a specific one that I was involved with and this would align very well with being able to get two manholes and we would create and design it so that all of that would be able to be accessed and so I'm very aware of everything that's going on out there.
Just one more question on the, so the credits, so a developer buys the, buys the credits, say from you or from us, the city, does, does the project have to be in Brandon or could it, could this be a project over in Sioux Falls, but they're buying the credits from Brandon?
No, it's in the lower Big Sioux River watershed, so it extends just south of Brookings and goes all the way down to the tip of the state.
And is it important that, um, the foundation owned the credits because we don't have to have the bid process, uh, if the city owns them, we would have the bid process?
That is exactly what would have, have to happen, if the city were to own it, they would have to go every time there's a transaction, we'd have to go through a bid process.
So, I guess what we're asking from you is just, is, one, are you interested? Um, and two, how do we go about making it happen?
That'd be a question for Brian.
I don't really see any downside myself, I, I go to the Development Foundation meetings in my spare time, um, and they have worked through this and Carrie has worked extensively on this and I, I struggle with what the downside could be, um, so I guess I would challenge, challenge us to try to work with them, because somebody's coming forward and bringing a good idea, we need to try to work with them.
Would one downside maybe be upkeep? Okay, so we're keeping this anyway?
I can talk to that.
That'd be great.
The Corps of Engineers requires for us, when we put together like a mitigation plan for this, when we put together what we're going to do for the wetland bank, they require a five-year monitoring period that the foundation would monitor or pay their consultant to monitor and make sure that the upkeep was kept to where it was so that there's no noxious weeds, erosion control, that information would all be drawn out ahead of time before the Corps of Engineers would even accept that. So, what happens is the Corps of Engineers will not accept that site until all that criteria has been met, once that criteria has been met, then they re-lease it and once it's re-leased, it would be the opportunity at that point where it would be, it's, um, supposed, it's, will be at the point where it's self-sustaining, is the word that we use.
Well, the, the thing is that we have the wetland, so if, if we don't have the wetland bank, we've, the city has to, has to fix it up and monitor it, am I correct on that?
That is correct.
So, you know, we, we, we've got it anyway, it's been handed to us, so.
I can't, so currently where we are at, we haven't submitted to the Corps of Engineers, uh, there's multiple phases of this, we are in the present or the proposal stage of it, if you want to call it, they call it a prospectus phase, we've gone through the draft review, we are now in the final review, it is, um, the Corps of Engineers is ready to put out a public notice, um, we wanted to talk with you and any adjacent landowners ahead of time to work to the mechanisms of how this would work and play out before we go on to the next step, the next step is basically the bank instrument, which would be the, um, design phase of it and then that also goes out for public notice and public comments are able to be received at that time too, for any of the modeling that we do for that site and illustrations what happened, um, as far as whenever we, you know, allow for the Corps of Engineers to put this out on public notice, there's a thirty-day public comment period and then, um, they turn around, they get a sixty-day period where we can go back and forth on any comments that come in and then, um, you know, ideally, we would work through the bank instrument over the next year and then go into design in the next two to three years in construction.
So, who has been paying your consulting fees?
The Development Foundation has.
I, I mean, I don't see why we don't at least keep this conversation going, I mean, it seems like a no-brainer to, let's, let's just keep this dialogue, dialogue going and see if we can make something happen.
So, this is, this actually was approved by the council in twenty-twenty-two to work on, so, um, so that's been three years. I have no idea.
I did do a little work for the city at that time when it was presented at that point, I'm just providing just a little bit of information, it never got past the draft prospectus process and it kind of went idle.
So, twenty-twenty-two?
And why, what, yeah, I guess why, sorry, why, we don't know, just kind of slipped through the cracks or why we? I don't know. We've got some work to do then.
I wasn't here then.
Let's blame it on you then.
Is there any action that needs to be taken tonight or is this just a discussion?
Well, I'd like to get us moving on it if we've been sitting on it for that long, either yea or nay, so however, whoever has to meet, I think we need to push it.
I would say that, uh, that, uh, you guys could meet maybe with our city engineer and our...
We are on a time constraint with the Corps of Engineers, they can only hold their projects open for so many days before they have to close it if they have no response back to us, so right now, they're waiting for us to provide the adjacent landowners so they can go to public notice and I think that they, I should hook that up, but, um, by the end of them, this month, they have to have something back to do, otherwise they close the project and it kind of starts to back themselves up.
And if you need a council representative, I would volunteer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't. Anybody else have a question?
So, they're going to set up a meeting with them?
Riley, Riley's going to set up a meeting with them? Where, where are we at? I don't want it to fall through the cracks again. Would that be with you, Tim?
Well, I suppose.
Okay, so Riley, you'll get in touch with Tim and, okay, perfect, okay.
Brian's the one that wanted the meeting, so I think Brian should take the lead and get it set up.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. We'll move on, we have the, uh, determination for a final TIF eligible cost.
TIF number seven is done, Encore Park, they've submitted a final cost, uh, they vary somewhat from the estimated TIF costs that were included in the plan, infrastructure costs and interest costs came in lower than anticipated, so they would like to move that, uh, to land acquisition, which is also a TIF eligible cost, total cost for the project remains the same at eight and a half million dollars for the TIF. Again, uh, this is a pay-as-you-go TIF, the city only reimburses the amount of, of tax increments received each year.
Is something we need a motion on?
Correct.
Yes. Then it's, you're ready to move forward with it?
Yep.
I'll look for a motion. Motion second to approve, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Street Department, we've got the work report on page ninety-four, concrete, uh, repair project, this is something that we've discussed already.
Yep, annual, annual concrete repair project, we're looking at, uh, advertising with a bid opening on April twenty-fourth before the council considers the bids on May fifth.
I'll look for a motion on that. Motion second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. And we've got a quote for the dust treatment on Chestnut.
Correct, Chestnut and Redwood, we've partnered with, uh, the township for the last half dozen years or so for dust control, uh, this year's quote is seven thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars and thirteen cents.
Okay, I'll look for a motion on that, let's come, come on up.
Okay, my name's Tom Brown, I'm one of the supervisors under Brandon Township and we're asking if you could help us out on dust control again this year and you've helped us out in the past and I really appreciate the help you have on it. This year, the quote came in about eighty dollars less than last year, why, I don't know, can't tell you, just came in last, um, and if you could help us out with that and one thing we're looking at too is, you know, the dust control, it's a binder also and we run it out about August and the road starts to turn to crap again. And so, I'd called, uh, them and asked them what it would cost to put a half treatment on in, say, July and they thought that would last the whole year then and it was about between four thousand and forty-five hundred, she didn't send me a bid yet, they haven't got it yet and I'm a little, I'm just taking over from, because I'm doing Night River and so I'm helping out here, it's just kind of trip, moved out of the township, so, um, and so we're asking if, if you could help us out with that too, I know everybody's asking for money and stuff, we only get so much money a year and, you know, that's eleven thousand dollars or so, plus we spend over that ourselves on road grading and, and rock that we put in there all the time, we spend more on Redwood and Chestnut than we do on all the other land, or roads we do, we got forty acres we got to take care of, there are forty miles we got to take care of and we got roads that need to be repaired, repaired from the last flood and we can only do so many a year because that's our budget, we can't spend more than what we get, so we have, you know, like nine residents on that road and we're getting between four and fifty and six hundred cars a day over that and that isn't just from our nine people that are on our township, it's a lot from the city and I'm sure you guys realize this, um, and so we're asking if you could help us out with a little bit more to help hold that road together, um, let's see, uh, I can get you the exact quote if you don't get it to me yet, but it was between four thousand and forty-five hundred put on about the first of July and then it should last till we're done with the road until winter time.
Okay, any, any questions?
So, you're asking us for an additional, take care of that whole amount or?
Yes, we don't have the money. I think that, I think that the, the quote that we have in front of us does not include us, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
So, we would need to come back with?
Yeah, that, that'd probably be the way to do it, come back with, you get the quote.
Yeah, we need to actually get a quote, get it to Brian and we can get back on the agenda for the extra.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Right now, we don't know what we would be approving, so. We're going to take care of this one that we have in front of us.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Tom. Motion second to approve the dust control treatment for Chestnut and Redwood, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Uh, water and sewer, we've got, uh, drainage area maintenance project.
Correct, we've got a number of drainage areas that we need to do maintenance on this year, uh, same thing, we'd open bids on the twenty-fourth with council consideration on the fifth.
So, nothing to do today?
Nope, just, just approve the schedule.
Okay. Do you need a motion on that?
Yep.
Motion to approve that schedule?
Move to approve.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries, water treatment plant, uh, pay app number twenty-nine.
Uh, one of the smaller ones, a hundred and fifty-six thousand eight hundred and two dollars and seventy-one cents.
I'll look for a motion. Motion second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
You were coughing because you were concerned, okay, uh, Westview Drainage Project. Excuse me, did?
We had a motion and second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries, the Westview Drainage Project.
Uh, this is a work, uh, done at the Westview Drainage, uh, bid, uh, bill is forty-four thousand three five sixteen for work done to date.
Okay, I'll look for a motion on that. Motion second to approve, all in favor say aye. Both same sign. Motion carries.
Don't know yet.
No new business, do we need to have an executive session?
We don't, but just a reminder, we talked about it earlier, but we've got the canvassing board on Monday at five.
Is there anybody that will not be able to attend?
Is this coming Monday?
Monday.
Yeah, it won't be long.
It is, I'm just trying to get the canvassing thing together, so I'll put everybody's name on it unless you can't come.
We'll not hold you against your will.
What time is it?
Five o'clock.
All right, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Motion second to adjourn, all in favor say aye. Motion carries for adjourned.